Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the planning commission meeting for March fifteenth to order. And our first item on the agenda is public comments. So those folks who are in the audience who would like to speak for three minutes may do so now. Please raise your hand on your Zoom.
I see no hands raised at this time.
All right, seeing none, we'll move to the approval of minutes. Are there any? Anyone want to make a any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, if there's no objections, we will the minutes will stand approved. Okay, so agenda item number four is the comprehensive plan items. So as you all know, we have got three documents to go through. The yellow items are amendments which we have approved, or at least we considered to be approved last meeting. And then there are blue items that are new amendments. And there are some blue items in each of the I in each of the documents. So what I will do is ask for the first item on the docket, which is the Kenmore twenty year vision, which I do not see any blue items, but if Lori would like to point anything out that we need to know that we didn't know two weeks ago, I will give her an opportunity.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. You did a great job setting out the agenda for tonight. I don't have anything to add to the vision statement conversation. You looked at that last year, actually went through a couple of rounds of edits. So it would just be if you all have any changes this evening.
Are there any comments or statements from the planning commissioners? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to finalize this document for the purposes of public hearing and publication. Do I hear a motion to that? Okay, Christina has moved and it is moved and seconded to that motion. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved unanimously. So now we will cruise to the housing element amendments, which there are some blue items, which I would ask that each of the playing commissioners, please check them out to see if there are any issues there. And in the meantime, I will give Lori a chance to bring any items forward that she feels are important for the commission to consider.
There are probably two things I wanted to point out related to the housing element. One is that you had asked at your last meeting to have information on how many housing units had been built since 2019. So I asked our development services department to track that down. And the the time period for the information we gather is from April to April. So it's not the exact timeframe of the work that is in the housing element, but between April 2018 until April of 21, there were 142 housing units built. That's that's the net after you counted the demolition. So it was total built minus those units that were demolished. So that was one thing. The second thing I wanted to point out is under the description of medium density residential. I I slightly changed that language to say that there could be other densities approved as a result of consideration of different missing middle housing types. When we bring forward the missing middle code amendments, which is going to be hopefully at your next meeting, there may be some adjustments. It's possible that you'll want to amend this language a little bit or not, but that's why I changed it because you haven't actually settled on the missing middle amendments. And I wanted you to see those before formalizing a number in the housing element. So those were the two things I wanted to point out.
So what pages?
That is on page. Where is that? Oh, you know what? I bet that's in the the land use element. It's not in the housing element. It's the table in the land use element. So we'll get to that next.
Oh, wonderful. So I'm just looking through. So are there any comments or questions from the commissioners?
Just one quick question. Lori, did you say that a hundred and eighty two units were built between April 2018 and April 2021?
A hundred and forty two.
I am looking for item that I made a oh, I see what it is. Okay, just a second. Or point one point three. Okay, so I have a question about policy H four point one point three, and that's on page five dash twenty seven on the lower right hand corner. So my question first to to you, Lori, is that it says types legally created duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. Types in low and medium density residential classifications to continue without nonconformance limitations related to density setbacks, height or lot size. So could you kind of refresh?
Or Henry? So the nonconformance rules apply to buildings that were legally built at the time, but standards have changed and now they no longer meet the zoning code requirements. So they are legal nonconformances. They're nonconforming as to the current standards. And the purpose of this policy was to say I thought you all thought it was very confusing the way I previously written it. So I hope I did better this time. But the idea is that if there are nonconforming, basically missing middle housing types, rather than give them or apply to them the limitations of nonconformances, which have to do with potentially requiring a special permit to do any kind of a modification. And they don't have all the rights of a regular use to give not apply those limitations to them in certain cases. And those were for again, density, height setbacks, lot size. And for those things, basically what we're saying is that these existing legal structures, they already exist. We don't imagine that they're an issue for the neighbors. It's been they've been there probably since before incorporation. And so we're saying, let's not put limitations on them. Now, this does not apply to other kinds of nonconformances. For example, if it was a critical area setback nonconformance or a non other type of nonconformance, it doesn't automatically say they get to be legitimized for any type of nonconformance, but only for these types.
And so your existing structures, not
These are existing structures. These are not new structures. These are existing structures.
All right. Thank you. Mike, please go ahead.
Great job on this one, Lori. I'd make one suggestion, however. After the word allow, could we insert allow existing?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Otherwise, we've just exempted every other future development from.
There any objections to that amendment? Hearing none. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderland for that correction, which is very much needed.
Okay, I think I had one other comment. Anyone else in the meantime? Tracy, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is going back to page five dash three. It's the new paragraph about relationship to the natural environment. It's wonderful. Thank you so much for adding it. It was something that I think had come at my request. And I think I was looking for something like this and then additional. So just like we acknowledged in the paragraph to preceding history of discriminatory land use and housing practices that there was harm that was done. And now we're hoping to correct it. I was looking for something similar with the environment that doesn't just say like that our natural environment is important, but that that there has been actual harm done to our natural environment because of our patterns of development. And then and we want to move forward and do things differently and address that. And the reason that I'm looking for that is because I feel like we need to ground ourselves in that place so that we can move forward to a better place. So if there is appetite on the commission for adding something like this, perhaps a sentence or two in the beginning, I would I would be in favor of that.
Do we have a sentence to put there? And I don't mean to be difficult, but we are finalizing the document for public hearing.
Right. I suppose I didn't really write one in my notes. I'm looking through them now.
Lori, this could you possibly come up with an idea here?
We could add potentially a second sentence. The natural environment element notes that natural systems have played an important part in defining the character of Kenmore. Historically, environmental protection has not always.
Lori, just maybe to help your thinking, but I'm thinking of like historic, like the historic conditions of this land before settlers arrived here. It was all wetlands and marshes and the Spanish River was meandered. You know, it wasn't straight. And and all of those changes that we like that we've arrived at present conditions because of changes that humans have made to the land through our development practices and patterns. So that we have really significantly altered altered the landscape and that we I think you're said what you're saying very well. And the second part is that we need to now protect like repair what we've damaged and protect. So the second part, I think, is great. It's just the acknowledgement that we have significantly altered the landscape because of of how we've developed. Historically, it was this, and now it's not because of what we've done. And this is what we're going to do going forward.
So this is page Tracy, just for my
It's page five, three. It's the yeah, the section in blue on five, three, relationship to the natural environment, the new paragraph that Lori wrote.
I'm wondering about something like historically. This area has significantly changed the environment. It has made significant alteration to the environment as a result of development, moving forward, protecting Lake Washington, da, 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 da. Does that get to it? And and then I would need to hear from the commission as a whole.
Is that all right with you, Tracy?
Yes.
So would you move that, please, as an amendment?
Yeah, I I move that the amendment that I move that the sentence that Lori just created to talk about the historical conditions of the landscape and how we've altered it through our development be added to the paragraph relationship to the natural environment.
Okay, and is it okay that Lori can choose the appropriate words for the da, 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 da?
Yes, I was assuming that that da, 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 that was the existing language.
Right. Okay, just want to make sure. So it's been moved. Is there a second? There's Nathan has seconded. So is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted by unanimous consent. Are there any? Nathan, I see that yellow hand of yours there.
Lori, I had a technical question on policy H four point one point four. This is jumping back ahead to where we were just a minute ago, right after the grandfathered in duplexes and triplexes. And this has to do with manufactured housing communities. Would creating that stronger language, saying that the city will preserve and maintain existing manufactured housing communities? Would that put the city in contention with private property rights with property owners of those those housing communities if the city says that we will take steps to preserve this and restrict, I guess, potentially the future rights of property owners to develop elsewhere should zoning change?
So I have I have asked that question to the city attorney. I will say this was not the staff recommendation. This was a request by the planning commission to make that stronger language. So I think that's probably a discussion you want to have with your commissioners about whether you want to go back to consider measures to preserve and maintain or use the stronger language, which again, I need to check with our city attorney.
So are you saying that the city attorney yet hasn't gotten back to us in terms of the legality of that statement? Okay.
Well, I I think, you know, it's a policy statement and maybe you it could be softened a little bit. If you want to say preserve and maintain, you could say some existing manufactured housing communities. I this this is a really uncomfortable policy because of the position the city is in. So I certainly would prefer to go back to consider measures too. But if the commission wants to be strong and this is your position, then I will vet it with the city attorney.
I understand the position that we have as the commission and valuing these communities, and I'm not against that in any way. I want to make that clear. But the point I bring up is I'm concerned or I'm not certain if this could cause legal trouble for the city later on. I guess I would. It would help to know what the city attorney thought of this statement and how it would impact us. Is there potentially maybe other language that still gets this point across without potentially coming back to bite the city later on, such as saying value and maintain existing manufactured housing communities? This is just I'm thinking freely to the commission here and trying to balance both the legal sense and complications around this statement versus also what we're trying to definitely assert here within this policy. I'm open to hearing if if there are other suggestions in terms of this, or if we want to leave this as is, which is perfectly fine. But as Lori said, the the city attorney has not yet made a ruling on on this. So I I'm curious to know what what you all think.
Which which H dash are you discussing? Which line specifically I'm?
It's on page. It's on page five dash twenty seven.
Yeah, I believe it's five.
Five dash twenty six, I think.
Five dash twenty six, yeah.
Oh, well.
Left hand side and it's H four point one point four.
Yes, it's it's a blue. It's blue.
Right.
Four point one point, right.
Four. Yeah.
Correct. Well, mine says, I'm sorry, mine said twenty seven. By the songs we know where we're we're all looking at the same.
Yeah, it is following exactly the one that talked about the nonconformances.
Again, my point is just saying having the the word preserve puts the city in a position that could bring it into contention with property owners. And I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's other verbiage we could use to get that point across without creating legal problems for parties later on. I'm sorry, Lori, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I should not have interjected. I was going to suggest you could add when possible preserve and maintain if that is more comfortable. That would be an alternative.
Didn't didn't we have a discussion about this before where we felt that the wording was non actionable and was too tame? So we went this chin to try to make sure we were doing something actionable to support it.
Right, that's that's why this change was made.
I in I guess my point to this is consider measures sounds too soft. But preserving might be too hard and come back to hurt the city. I'm wondering if there's like a middle ground or something. Whether it is a attempt or preserve when possible. Preserve and maintain existing housing communities when possible, which at least live leaves a little more I guess leeway when it comes to contention with property owners if that were to to occur in the future.
So I might give a little background to the commissioners who weren't part of the manufactured housing communities project, just so you know why this particular statement is causing some discomfort. And that is when the city council considered the manufactured housing communities, they requested permanent preservation for two of the communities south of SR five two two. And they requested a temporary. It's not very temporary. It's ten years preservation of the manufactured housing communities north of SR five two two. And then that zoning, the manufactured housing community zoning was supposed to sunset and a higher density residential was supposed to be put in place. The city council at the time had a resolution stating just that. There has not been any action on that because the city is currently in a lawsuit over the manufactured housing community zoning. So I think Nathan's point is we are not certain what the direction is for some of the manufactured housing communities, which is why staff was suggesting to consider measures or when possible preserve and maintain that kind of thing. So that's background that might be helpful.
Tracy?
This is just a procedural question for like a staff lawyer or Debbie. Are our recommendations vetted by the city attorney before they go to council or not?
They, yeah, the city attorney reviews the ordinance, the final ordinance and the measures. And then we call out to the city attorney any that we think are problematic. And I had asked the city attorney to take a look at any changes related to the manufactured housing communities.
And the other thing actually is the city attorney is obligated to review those things that go to the city council. And if he or she finds something that could be a problem for the city, they advise the council to that issue. That's normally how a city attorney works for a city council.
So then just a question on the then just a question of procedure with what you just mentioned, right? Then if we maintain this language in this plan and I hope I'm not having audio issues. If we maintain this language in the plan and the city attorney finds that it's difficult, then they make a recommendation to the city council and then they would essentially make a decision or have a risk assessment on whether or not they would want to keep the language or not. Is that the the procedure then?
If you choose to skip with this language? If you wish to stick to the language, yes, we would have the city attorney look at it. And this, I didn't have a response back from the city attorney in time for you to consider it at the public hearing, which of course I will. The city attorney is very prompt. Then they would they could provide information to the city council.
Nathan?
Well, Lori, if you believe that we can get a response from the city attorney before the public hearing, then there's still that window of opportunity in changing this before the public hearing if we do get that feedback back before the public hearing.
Um, well, even after the public hearing, you always have the option to make your final recommendation. I it would be extremely helpful if I could have something to say. If I had the preliminary recommendation, because that's what over the next month I need to advertise, I need to send out to the community so they see what what you all are thinking of as your preliminary recommendation. So I don't want to hold up the preliminary recommendation until the public hearing, until we get something from the city attorney. If you have a sense of which way you want to go, I think we should just go that way and then we'll vet it and you can change your mind based on city attorney recommendation, if need be.
Mariel and then Mike.
I think with that in mind, given the conversation that we've had on this language and to strengthen it, my preference would be to maintain it as is until we hear back from the city attorneys. And then at that point.
The dog thinks so too. So Mike?
Just a mostly a procedural consistency question here. If we're thinking that we're going to create a special class for mobile homes and the city is going to protect those as they are going forward, I'm a little concerned about policy. What is it? Four, one, five? When we're talking about displacement and what happens in unavoidable displacement and particularly the language for mobile home parks in particular, consider a funding pool to assist low and modern income residents in deteriorating and obsolete mobile home to find alternative housing in the community or help to establish preferences in nearby housing for persons giving up their home. We need to strike all of that language. It would be consistent with maintaining permanently the mobile homes as they are.
I would like to make a comment. I agree with what Mike just said. But more importantly, I agree with Nathan's perspective. My experience in these types of documents and then what happens in court, et cetera. I do believe that although we feel that way, the statement is too restrictive. The statement is too um restrictive. And it would be my. Uh viewpoint that I would think that the city council. Being careful about what they're doing as far as their uh responsibility to city government. Um that that is not going to last at the council. Um I I'd. That is a very strong statement, and I think it needs to have some. Consideration or some some latitude. For the city to evaluate the existing manufactured housing. It's my viewpoint. Derek.
Uh yeah, I'm wondering um just dusted off my thesaurus is here. And uh wondering if uh we can aspire to preserve and maintain existing. Um that would uh direct one's hopes or ambitions towards achieving something. But there's no guarantee in there. It's hopes and ambitions, very similar to thoughts and prayers, I think.
Bulls, yes. Would you like to make a motion for that and see how the commissioners feel?
Uh yes, I would like to make a motion that we begin that sentence with aspire to preserve and maintain existing manufactured housing communities.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Mike has seconded, so is there now discussion on the amendment? Mike.
Short discussion. In thinking about this, I think we need to ask ourselves, what is our intent here? Are we looking to create a permanent class of housing and protect that through city code? Are we looking to preserve uh? Housing for particular types of people and to come up with a rationale, a w- approach to how do we handle displacement? Uh I'm the more in favor of the former or the the latter rather. I I think it's more actionable if we come up with a plan and offer a policy that directs us to a plan. To deal with displacement rather than trying to create and hamstring. The city, not just in a legal sense, which I think nation Nathan is right to point out, but also in terms of strategic planning, twenty years down the line. Is current uh manufactured housing in the city really the best in the best interest of the low income population? Twenty years is a long time. Do we want to constrain the city to maintaining something which may not be in anybody's best interest twenty years down the line? I'd rather have the emphasis on how do we maintain uh low income housing and deal with displacement when it happens for good reasons. My discussion point.
Debbie, you would like to make a comment?
I I would just like to make one comment is that the the when we went through the manufactured housing project. And we had went through that with the planning commission and the council. And the pros and cons of retaining manufactured housing communities as a source of affordable housing. That's when the council made the decision that they did. Unfortunately, we're now in this legal challenge. Which is why there is a question mark on the policy direction. So I think the legal questions that we have are more related to the legal challenge that we have to make sure. That the policy that we're currently including is not going to cause problems with the lawsuit. I don't think this is the opportune time to now revisit the question of preservation of manufactured housing communities. At this point.
Further discussion on the motion. Nathan.
Uh can I ask once more what city staff's recommendation is in this? Uh you guys have been around. Uh involved in this this discussion a lot longer than I have, and you've seen a lot more. Um and so I'm sure that you would have a a or I I'm just curious to hear your your pros and cons uh of this as well.
So the city staff recommendation was not to change the existing policy, which read. Continue um ma- or consider measures to preserve and maintain existing manufactured housing communities. That's the existing policy in the existing comp plan that was in place at the time that the project was done. So our recommendation was not to change that, knowing that we were in this potentially contentious situation. So that's what we recommended, and then again, the planning commission at your last meeting asked that we. Strike that and make it stronger. Uh that is a change in policy. Direction, I think it is a change. That's why it would be vetted with the city attorney.
Lori, um just adding on to that, would would our current uh uh motion in place, changing it to aspire to preserve? Would that align with the staff's recommendation?
I I don't know. I I mean, staff's recommendation is that there not be a change, but if you want to change it to aspire, uh then we will run that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I think I I just need a, uh this is a question of of clarification maybe for Debbie, what. Based on what you just said, just so that I may I'm want to make sure I understand you correctly. So. Did you say, I could be wrong, did you say that the policy? There is unease about changing the policy because we are currently in a lawsuit. And there could be implications for the lawsuit if the policy is changed.
Yes.
That that's right. Okay, so so I think I'm clear, but just I'm going to take it another step further, so just to really make sure I understand it. So if we, the city weren't involved in a lawsuit, we would be having a different conversation. That might not involve staff recommending that the policy not be changed, maybe, maybe in some alternative universe, is that?
Potentially, I think if you made a s- a stronger change that was sort of inconsistent with the council's direction, we would as staff point that out. It makes it a little bit more complicated now because it sort of changes the policy direction and we're in a lawsuit. And counsel direction, yes, and council's direction and on the manufactured housing community was done by resolution. And we haven't bought brought back those implementing regulations because we're still in the lawsuit. So we're in sort of a limbo position and we're just being very cautious at the moment while we are in the middle of this lawsuit.
Thank you, that helps a lot. Thank you, Debbie.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? I don't, oh, there's Mike.
Yes, I would just say that uh I would support this motion uh only because. I I think it's second best to making no change in policy at all. If we had a motion to retain the policy as it is, I would be more, I would be in favor of that. But I'd be voting only on this motion because I I see it as uh the least onerous option in in front of us. Unless, of course, Derek wants to change his motion.
Further discussion.
I I think for for me, I mean, looking at the question as Mike just articulated, um. If we're changing it to the language that Derek suggested, not that I had necessarily any issue with that language. But at least for me, it doesn't necessarily point to anything truly different than what staff's recommendation was so. From from my mind, either maintaining the language as we had requested staff to change to. Knowing that we were waiting for an opinion back by the city attorney. You know, either going that way, that route, or having staff just change the language back to what their recommendation was. I I don't necessarily see how Derek's recommendation necessarily um changes it because to um. Uh aspire to preserve for me is is very equal to considering measures to preserve, right? This is my thing.
If there's any further discussion. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Lutzus?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderland?
Yes.
Commissioner Banazinski? Yes, sorry, I had looked down for a moment. Uh Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres Metaport?
No.
Commissioner Whitehead?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
I.
Passes six, six to one.
The motion is approved and adopted. Is there any further discussion or motions on this item? Hearing none. We will move on to any other items that the commissioners wish to bring up. On the housing element, I believe that's what this is called. Tracy.
Yeah, this is on page five thirteen. The figure on the top of that page is figure eight eight, housing units and bedrooms. Let me know when you're ready, Lori. Yeah, okay. And this isn't. Not hugely significant, but that there's a sentence at the end of that first paragraph, it says, without Asian. Non-Hispanic or Latino householders. Blah blah blah. I just wondered if we could phrase that in the positive instead of like. In the negative, like without, if we could just say something like Asians, not Hispanic or Asian, not Hispanic and Latino households are thirteen percent of the total. Of whatever percent of Kenhold house, Kenmore householders, period. BIPOC householders are six percent of the total, just so that it was both a positive and affirming for each racial group. And I'm thinking, I was thinking about how Asians are um subject to like stereotypes of exceptionalism and. You know, negative stereotypes don't apply to them. When I, when I was thinking about that.
I had to read that sentence so many times just to figure out what. What numbers we were talking about and actually what we were focusing on. Yeah, the the double negative in there did. Did throw me for a loop a couple of times. Not that I'm sharp, but.
Lori, how's that sound to you?
So I think um. So uh Tracy, could you say again how you were thinking it could be rewrite?
So my understanding was that what that we that you were saying that y- you you wanted to say how many. BIPOC householders there are in Kenmore, but you wanted to take Asians out of that.
Correct.
Okay, so I was just wondering if we could say. Asian, not Hispanic or Latino householders. Are and then whatever percentage of the total, and I calculated as thirteen percent based on what I read, but I would want somebody to check me on that. Are whatever percentage of the total percentage of Kenmore householders, period. And then just take out other and say. Oh, no, 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 don't don't take out other, leave other, take out the comma and capitalize other. Other BIPOC householders are six percent of the total and four percent of Kenmore's householders. I misread my edit there, I'm sorry for that confusion.
First of all, is there, is is the staff com- comfortable with that rewrite? I see a head nod down at the Lori.
Hmm, I think that's fine.
Oh, oh, not not too soon, is that that head nod was too soon? Any other comments? Is there any uh issues with uh Tracy's suggestion? So if Lori doesn't have a uh staff issue with that. She does not, is there any objections to that rewrite? Hearing none, um it's so ordered. Next item on the housing element, any commissioners want to bring up anything else? Hearing none. The um I will um. Entertain a motion to finalize the housing element. Uh in preparation for a public hearing. Anyone want to say yes? Move that. Uh thank you, Nathan. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objections? Hearing none, it's unanimously adopted to move forward to public hearing. So now, if I'm. On target here. We are to the land use settlement, is that correct? Lori, would you like to say anything before?
This is um on page four dash, uh let's see here, it's four. A uh. Seventeen. There is a table uh that talks about land use classifications. And um a- and I need to uh give you a little bit of background. Uh the city, the city manager uh and um development services director, we had a meeting and. All agreed that splitting the TOD amendments away from. Missing middle housing and the land use vision statement and housing elements made sense. So we are going to be taking up the TOD zoning code amendments in June. And they will probably targeted to go to the council maybe in September. Because of that change, because we are not bringing forward the TOD amendments with this package, because we want to fully. Think about what the TOD panel said and the council's interest in more affordable housing. It is important for us to make comprehensive plan changes uh so that we don't have to go back, we can only amend the comp plan once a year. Uh so we want to sort of prepare the comprehensive plan for our TOD amendments. And there are two minor changes that I would like to recommend tonight. And uh Debbie, I know will speak up since she hasn't heard these either. Uh but this would allow us to move forward with the element. Getting ready for TOD amendments, and one of those is in this table on four A seventeen. Under high density residential, we have implementing zoning districts of. R eighteen, R twenty four, and R forty eight. But there are residential areas in the TOD that don't have a name yet. And they're going to be higher densities than R forty eight. Remember, we talked about a hundred and fifty dwelling units per acre. So I would like to add a phrase after R eighteen, R twenty four, R forty eight. That says, and I actually did write some language here. We would add and new and a new transit oriented residential zone. Because we don't even know what we're going to call it yet. So if you're comfortable with that change, that would put us in a position to give it the name that you like. And to create, and we don't have to create the new zone, but we think we will create the new residential zone to reflect the TOD requirements.
I have a question. Information, so. I think my numbers are a little different than your numbers, so. Are where are we on?
See, LU two point one point two.
Okay, great, okay.
It's a table and down at the bottom, we have high density residential listed. We already show that TOD area as high density residential on the map. But we don't have a zoning district that's going to reflect the TOD standards. So I would like to just put a placeholder in there and cut and say that we're going to have a new transit oriented residential zone.
In in the left side of the classification.
Uh no, on the right side. Uh it this table, it it has implementing zoning district.
I see, okay.
Now we don't have the zoning district.
I I get it now. Okay, thank you. Nathan, did I see your hand? No, that was a movement. Okay. Okay. Are there any comments? Questions? Now Nathan has his hand up.
Yes, now now I do. Lori, did you want us to or are you suggesting that we put in that whole sentence? Or are you suggesting that we put in maybe an abbreviation like just TOD and then define elsewhere what TOD or not me not exactly TOD, but TOD one or TOD dash?
Yeah, we actually have talked about not calling it TOD. So we've talked about urban residential as a name for the zone, but we don't want to like get out ahead of your conversation about what the name of the zone should be. On the other hand, if you like urban residential, we'll put UR in there. And then when we develop our new TOD regs, the new residential piece of that will be UR. If you don't want to go that far, then we are suggesting in lowercase, we'd say a new transit oriented residential zone.
TOD TBD.
Yeah, TOD TBD. That would be good.
And there'll be an acronym.
Right.
All right. What is the desires of the commission? Nathan?
I'm I'm perfectly fine putting urban residential or UR for the time being. I think that's a lot easier than putting in a sentence every every single time we have to reference this kind of district. And so just putting in UR for now, I think is fine and will ease it instead of trying to put in lots of wording in that that box in the zone and we can always come back and rename it later. But I think for the time being, I have no issue with with urban residential.
Further comments? Okay, so Nathan, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll motion that we add the urban residential zone under implementing zoning district in the high density row of the table and policy LU dash two point one point two.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Christina. Further discussion? Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Lori. Lawyer, you happy now?
I am, except I have one other thing I want to talk.
Oh, go right ahead.
And that is in the implementation section. Again, because this TOD piece is coming right on the heels of what we hope will be the adoption of these changes, I would like to add an implementation section. So the way this is worded, it says new programs, rules, or regulations are needed to address. And I would add transit oriented development, density increases, and revised standards in the area near the Metro Sound Transit Park and Ride. So we know that there's an implementation measure. It's on page four A thirty-two. Otherwise, we're kind of silent on the fact that we're going to be doing these TOD.
Okay, four A thirty-two.
Correct.
Lori, is this something that's not here yet at all?
Correct.
Okay, right. Could you please say it again?
Yeah. So it it helps to know that the beginning of that section reads new programs, rules, or regulations are needed to address, and this would be the new bullet point. Transit oriented development, density increases, and revised standards in the area near the Metro Sound Transit Park and Ride. So we're acknowledging that we're going to do these these zoning changes in the area near the park and ride.
So it's both a new section. If you think about your headers, the text here is a section and then and then new bullet points, but both of those things.
No, it's just a new bullet point under that section that we on the previous page, new.
New programs. I see it. Okay, thank you.
Right. New programs, rules, or regulations.
Any further discussion on this? So for the record, with the new bullet point on that page, would Lori, would you please read your?
Yes. The new bullet point would be transit oriented development, density increases, and revised standards in the area near the Metro Sound Transit Park and Ride.
Is there a motion to amend the land use element at that point at that spot for that sentence? I need a motion. Someone want to move that? Okay, Mike has made a has moved it. And is there a second? And Marielle has seconded. Okay, further discussion? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is unanimously adopted. Lori, are you?
I'm done with my suggestion. So I'm so sorry to do that.
No, that's fine. I you had it all ready to go. So that makes our it's not even eight o'clock yet. We're we're.
You're doing okay.
Yeah. So are there any further items that the commissioners wish to discuss on the land use element? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to finalize the land use element and and bring it to public hearing. Is there a motion to that effect?
I saw move.
Mike has moved. Is there a second? And Nathan has seconded. So any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any objections to the main motion? Hearing none, it is the motion has been adopted and we will now move to the next item. Which I don't know if we have another.
Yeah, the next item is actually part of the land use element, but it's the final direction from the final preliminary direction on the map. We talked about this last time. It's attachment four to your packet. This is the land use plan. This is the comprehensive plan map. And it's used to give general policy guidance when the zoning is done. And the question was whether a portion of the countywide growth center in the northeast corner should be included in the countywide growth center or not. You can see, I already have a red change. We talked about this last time, but this piece of property that sticks out into the are I think that's probably an R one area even should needs to be changed. So I've already flagged that change. But if you look at attachment five, the the question was where the boundary should where the countywide growth center boundary should fall. And you asked me to identify what the existing uses were. And so starting from the south, you can see where the park and ride is. Do you do you all have that map? Okay, so you can see the park ride. The next thing is the Montessori school. The next thing is Mary's place. Those parcels are all currently zoned for downtown commercial. So they are already recognized as being part of downtown. If you move north from there, there are the Housing Authority apartments, there is townhomes and condominiums, and there's one single family home at the far north of that area. Those parcels are all zoned for high density residential. And then the last parcel that was under consideration is developed with townhomes. And it is zoned for medium density residential. So when development occurs, and you can see this most easily up at the townhome property, you see the orange parcel lines. So what happens is the townhomes are on their own parcel. And the parcels behind the townhomes are tracts. They're sensitive critical area protective tracts. So when new development occurs, the wetland buffer, et cetera, are put into tracks for permanent protection. The zoning rules already require that if you're doing any kind of development on these lots, it has to be clustered up at seventy-third Avenue Northeast away from the critical areas. So given that and given the fact that right across the street is owned downtown residential and downtown commercial, and that these properties probably most relate to downtown, staff continues to believe that the line could include these properties that directly about seventy-third in the countywide growth center, which would be the boundary that's shown on attachment four. There needs to be some adjustment of that line. We need to up at the townhomes, put it at the tract line. I think those at the where the purple line is that probably is a tracked line. So we need to make it match the development and the zoning. But I think staff continues to believe it's okay to include it in the countywide growth center. And so there was one option that said remove all these parcels from the countywide growth center and another option said remove all of the parcels or no remove only the sort of rest colored medium density residential in the far northeast corner. Those were the two options you were thinking about. So.
Is there a discussion on this point?
Yep. I had Eric. I had a thought that struck me as I was walking by these townhomes the other day. I'm wondering if anyone's reached out to the landowner themselves to get any input from them. And this happened to me once when land use and zoning changed on my property. Well, I didn't own it, but I leased it. And it went majority in my favor, but nobody ever reached out to me to ask my input on what was happening under my feet. And I'm wondering if that's something that's doable. It would we like to hear their input? I would assume that the landowner would want to be involved, especially when we're basically at the point almost of flipping a coin. At this point, why not see what the vested interest is of the landlord?
Yeah, I I would say that we're not changing the zoning. So that's an important point. But the designation as a countywide growth center certainly is something we could talk with the property owners about. And in fact, that could happen as part of the outreach over the next month as we're getting ready to go into the public hearing if the commission wants to do that.
I I would strongly advocate towards that just helping the city be more transparent and to get, you know, vested interest in this. So and just so I'm clear, we're not we're not looking at changing those properties from pumpkin spice latte to bubble gum. We're just drawing that little black line a different spot.
Right, correct.
Okay, Tracy's up next about bubble gum.
And I wondered, just as a pointed information, how it's decided where the tract started, how how it was decided where the track started for these properties?
Right. So when a development is proposed, then there is an environmental report that identifies the boundary of the wetland and the buffer to the wetland. And then the line is is the tracked line.
The buffer, the buffer line.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
I believe it was Nathan.
So Lori, I believe you said we're not talking about changing density at all. So we're again, I I got a little confused when you're talking about densities and countywide growth centers. We're just discussing countywide growth center and whether it should include this little corner. Is that right?
Correct. So the pros of including that little corner are that we have to have a certain number of they're called activity units to be a countywide growth center. And these higher density developments help us with our unit population counts. That's the advantage of including it. These are not the areas where we would anticipate the higher density changes. For one thing, except for that one single family house, I can't imagine that any of these would be redeveloping. And where our proposed growth is focused is downtown and really on the Lake Point Plywood Supply Special Study Area sites. So again, the advantage is we get to for a little bit of acreage, we get to put in a lot more so that we can meet those standards. But that is not where the growth is anticipated.
And and there wouldn't be any downsides to this, or I'm sorry, not downsides, but what what are the other impacts? What will this? What will this change for those properties?
I don't think it changes anything. Really, it doesn't change the zoning. It doesn't change the density. It we have existing standards in place. It would it would make them potentially feel like they were associated with downtown. Trying to think what other things it might.
I see.
Yeah, it it just it's just an acknowledgement that it's a center where people can get to transit. They're close to transit, but close to services, et cetera. Debbie, do you have anything to add there?
No, I can't. I don't have any other additional reasons to add for the pros and cons. No, it is with basically aerial designation. It's not changing the underlying zoning. It's an aerial designation that you would sort of if you're included in that, you're part of this designation more associated with high density downtown growth.
Christina?
But it potentially, if it got designated as a downtown potential growth area, could it possibly change to high density? Is that a possibility where go where it does get changed to that?
I I can't imagine a scenario where that would happen, just given that that's right up against the Swamp Creek Wetlands.
Okay.
And I I mean, there's one house, right? There's one single family house there. And it may be that that portion of that property could go to a higher density. There could be, but they're allowed to do that anyway under the current zoning. So that could be a change that you would see, but that's unrelated to the countywide growth center designation. Yeah, no, it this designation doesn't give you permission to do anything. You still have to comply with the zoning. And now when we look at other parts of that downtown, when we look at Lake Point, when we look at whether we're going to increase densities in the downtown area, when we talk about things like requiring a minimum FAR, so there have to be more than a single story building, those things contribute to Kenmore's recognition as a countywide growth center. What's the advantage of a countywide growth center is that we're a target for regional funding? That's a good thing. So that's the advantage of the countywide growth center. This strip of properties adds to our units, so we can maybe meet our required balance of housing units and jobs. But it doesn't change the zoning. Doesn't change the zoning. The zoning, we'd have to go through a rezoning process for the whole area to to change the zoning.
Eric?
I'm wondering if on paper that being a part of the this growth project, does that then facilitate these units to qualify for like the voucher program or anything like that with subsidies? Does that in any way help them there?
No, it's that's unrelated.
Nathan?
You can let Mike go first. He's had his hand up and then I'll go after Mike.
I'm sorry, Mike. He's got the yellow hand.
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, Lori?
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, Lori, am I correct in believing that adding these additional uh uh units would potentially reduce the pressure for development uh or density elsewhere? That if we acquire these units and get to give credit for that, and by bringing us closer to that goal, uh, we have less pressure uh on our development requirements elsewhere in the city otherwise?
I I don't think it uh necessarily results in less pressure throughout the city, but it does contribute to the housing units that we need for the countywide growth center. So it it could reduce pressure in other parts of uh the countywide growth center.
Okay, so I believe oh, Nathan, there you go.
Uh, so Lori, just to clarify again, this countywide glow- growth center is is just a boundary and no more. It's not an overlay or a zone. We it can't be used to implement new um requirements such as FAR that would have to go zone by zone within the downtown?
It it doesn't result in any changes to the underlying zoning. All it says is that Kenmore is committed to having growth and development as a countywide growth center, and that we have to achieve um, uh, it's called thirty activity units per acre, which is a combination of population and jobs. We have to strive to achieve that. And then if we uh are moving in the direction of being a genuine countywide growth center, uh, then we are a um potential recipient of regional funding. That's what it means. It doesn't change the zoning. It doesn't change the FAR. None of those things are changed. Now, here's how a change could happen. Um, just to lay it out there. If, for example, Lake Point, which is targeted for a number of housing units, those housing units are kind of critical to our countywide growth center designation. If Lake Point moves in a different direction and we don't have those housing units, then either there are other places downtown where those housing units have to be made up somehow by increased densities, for example, in downtown commercial. Or the city has to decide, whoops, we're not going to be a countywide growth center after all. And that is certainly a choice that the city could make. But it doesn't in and of itself change any existing zoning.
And it can't be used like a zone, and so policies can't be applied to this countywide growth center. They'd have to go zone by zone. Is that correct?
Well, you could do policies that in fact, there are policies in the land use element that talk about the countywide growth center. So we can apply policies. But if you wanted to change densities or FARs or anything like that, those are zoning changes that have to be done zone by zone separately.
Okay, um, can you just briefly give me a couple of examples of some of those policies that do refer to the countywide growth center just to?
They are in the land use element, um, and they are. Let me see if I can put my finger on them right away. Uh, they're on page four A twenty-nine. It's goal three. So if you want, there are several policies under there, so we're going to um. We're deciding it's a place to equitably concentrate jobs, housing, shopping, and recreational opportunities. We're going to ensure that the jobs population goal of that thirty activity units that I mentioned is met. And the standards are laid out in um a countywide evaluation tool. And then the city applied to be a countywide growth center. Uh, and we're initially nominated. It won't be fully decided until after uh twenty twenty-four. Uh, we're going to plan for a mix of uses. This is where the policy that you all settled on about increasing the FAR in the downtown commercial area sits. Uh. Demonstrate that downtown is a priority for growth and investment. Continue to use design standards. Uh, plan for a variety of housing types, including affordable housing. Um, try to retain existing residents and businesses in the community as growth is planned. Uh, continue to support existing recreational opportunities, support multimodal transportation. So those are the policies related to the countywide growth center.
Now, I'm just giving my opinion out there. I guess I don't see any reason why these uh goals should be withheld from those couple of properties in the corner. I don't think there's any downside to including those properties from what I've heard. So that's at least my position. Um, is that it should include that little corner that we're discussing.
So uh from a procedural standpoint, is the uh the red mark here that changed to low-density residential? That's a whole separate question. Is that?
Well, I thought we sort of talked about that question at the last meeting, but if the commission wants to confirm that you want me to take that bit out of uh medium-density and move it to low-density, that I would be happy to hear that.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? Uh, it's been moved and seconded that the red line would be changed to low-density as shown on the map. Is there further discussion? Tracy.
Not on this motion. I'm sorry.
Okay, so any further discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing on the motion to amend for the low-density residential red line there is adopted. So I just wanted to speak um with regard to the other comments. As long as it does not affect the environmental issues, which what I hear is there, the environmental issues are protected with that black line. Um, I, you know, this whole county, um, how county does stuff, it's all about the numbers. And if by including that high-density uh group of of condos, apartments, uh helps us out in the bigger picture, I I personally cannot see the harm with that, provided that there's um no issue with the environment in doing that. That's just my opinion. Uh, Tracy.
Yeah, m- my concern is that I I I understand that this is not a zoning um area, that there is underlying zoning. It's a description and a line that we have to draw to provide numbers and units. I I understand that. Um, my concern, which may or may not be realized in the future, a future, future concern is that the designation of those properties as part of the countywide growth center boundary would put additional pressure on them in the future for increased density. Um, just in the way that things get talked about in documents like these, that we have identified this area as our area of concentration for our countywide growth center, and therefore in future, that may, in my mind, put additional pressure on them, regardless of what the underlying zoning is.
Nathan.
Lori, uh, is this boundary, once we decide, set in stone? Or does it, can it be changed through amendments later?
Um, it it can always be changed. It could be completely eliminated as we move through time. Um, the uh, I wouldn't suggest that we do a lot of modification of it over the next couple of months. I mean, I I, as with other things, it's in an ideal situation, we would have a preliminary recommendation. We would take it to hearing. If the commission wishes me to contact the property owners as suggested by Commissioner Wykup, I'm happy to do that. Um, once you settle on what you want the boundaries to look like. Um, so probably whatever the boundary was would go through this comprehensive plan update cycle, which is through twenty twenty-four. And then you change it with the next update, if the city council directed a change prior to that. And the comp plan can be amended once a year.
So hypothetically, to address Tracy's concerns, if we saw that these couple of properties in the corner uh took their role as being members or being included within the countywide growth center a little too far and started rapidly developing more than they already are, we could make the change later to kind of kick them out or change that border through uh amendments? I I I'm, is that possible? I'm just asking if that's possible.
Think you can change what they can develop unless you change the zoning before they have a vested permit, but um, you you certainly could change the boundary of the countywide growth centers.
Yes, my my point is just if if inclusion in the countywide growth center is encouraging or enabling some of this this uh rapid development, then could we change that to avoid it or respond to it later? And it sounds like we can. So I think that at least um I I had a similar concern as Tracy, but hearing that and knowing that we can change that border later on, if we see those impacts, I think it eases that concern for me.
Okay, it'd be Mike, but I wanted to mention, we have to be very careful about spot zoning. And uh I believe there are some i- i- issues with spot zoning that we cannot do when we talk about one tract or another tract. So when we see things going out of what we feel should be happening, so just be aware of that. Mike? Mike, you're muted.
Lori, could you educate us a little bit on this? Uh, if the scenario were were to play out where the folks who currently are the property owners uh on those townhome sites, if they decided to go to a higher density and they were successful in getting uh that through, uh, what would be their responsibility or what would happen in terms of uh, the natural sites that are uh located next to them, particularly uh given the requirements for uh for the, for the nature zone that they're already in? Do they just do that? Would they, would there be environmental impact? Would there be other legal action? What kind of review would have to happen to protect those properties, given the way it's there, they're zoned right now?
So if someone on those properties wanted to tear down their existing development and build a new development at a higher density, they would have to do a couple of things. They would have to potentially get a comprehensive plan change. Uh, if they wanted to go to, for example, if those rust-colored properties wanted to be high-density residential, they would have to get a comprehensive plan change, which can happen once a year. You apply in November and then it might happen the next year, along with the zoning change to one of the zones that reflects high-density residential. Through the comp plan and uh rezoning process, there would be an environmental review done through CIPA to see what the impacts of that change would be. Also, when a person came in for a development permit, say they got the high-density residential change, then they would have to uh do a, an environmental review of the impacts of their development. As for the tracts that are currently established, those don't change. Those are there forever. So uh if someone wanted to do a high-density development, for example, if the townhomes, if they ripped down the new townhomes and we're going to build a higher-density development, the tract would still be the tract that was there, the protective tract. Um, and then the the proposal would be reviewed to see if there are other adverse impacts that would result. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does. Is there any higher level of protection that's available to those tracks?
Um. Uh, well, if if something's designated a critical area tract, there's no higher level of protection. That's in perpetuity. Um. So I know at least one of those back parcels is owned by the Audubon Society. Um. And some of them may have easements. I think down by the Mary's Place property, there may be some easements involved. And easements are the same thing. They're uh native growth protection easements uh that the city has ownership of, so the the um the easement can't be changed. Again, it's designed to be there in perpetuity to protect Swamp Creek and the Wetlands.
Thank you.
All right, so. So what I understand, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong. Do we need an amendment to move? Where are we on that black line, I guess? Is that?
So I I think where you are on the black line is to decide whether you want to retain those properties along seventy-third within the black line, or whether you risk to remove some or all of them. Uh, staff continues to believe that the downtown commercial properties should be in the growth center. Uh, we don't think it makes sense to have properties that are zoned for downtown commercial development outside of the countywide growth center. Um, but the high-density residential just to the north of the downtown commercial and the medium-density residential up in that northeast corner are um areas that you may want to talk about.
So the for procedural, if we um we've already made one amendment to that, but if we just adopt um attachment four with that one amendment, then the black line stays right where it's at.
Well, yeah, I I will tell you, I'm going to adjust the black line, so there's not any light yellow showing inside it. I am going to do that and make sure that the, in the rust-colored area, we're at the tract line.
Okay.
So we'll clean up the map, but basically that area would be included.
Okay, so we don't have to, unless somebody wants to take and move that black line, we don't need um, we don't need to, all we need to do is adopt attachment four for public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so are there any motions? Well, it's understood and without a, unless there's an objection, um, Lori will make the change on that black line as she just described as an administrative change. So is there any uh motions on attachment four that we have not done? Nathan?
I moved to adopt attachment fours, just discussed.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike has seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there any objections to the motion? Tracy objects?
I just want to, are we going to vote? Are you going to do it by union?
Well, you you if you've objected, so now it's back to discussion and then I would call for a vote after that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tracy. Did you want to speak?
You know, I, even those properties, the ones in the downtown area, Mary's Place and uh the Montessori School, the backs of those properties are, there's perpetually standing water in them. Um, it is exceedingly close to that huge wetland. I think it's called Wetland Three on some, some maps. Uh, and I I I just bring that up because it's it's sort of one thing to look at where these properties are on a map and to to think intellectually that, oh, you know, that line is getting drawn at the buffer, but it's another to be on the land and experience the conditions and what it's like. And I I think my objection perhaps is more, um. I mean, certainly it is practical, but it's also somewhat philosophical. Like, I I just feel uncomfortable recommending something based on a past recommendation and action that I would not have agreed to, that I would not have made myself. Um, and I I feel uncomfortable. Um, I I don't want to, I I don't want my um silence to indicate consent, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't hear appetite on the commission for moving the boundary, and that's fine. Um, but I did want the chance to voice some of my concerns and objections. voice some of my concerns and objections and to have that noted for the record.
Okay, um, Tracy has asked her comment to be uh, recorded in the minutes for the record. Are there any further comments with regard to the adoption of attachment four as amended? Hearing none, the clerk will call the rule.
Commissioner Torres metaphor?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderland?
Hi.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Hi.
Commissioner Banazinski?
No.
Commissioner Matthews?
No.
And Commissioner Wykow?
Hi.
Commissioner Vanderland, did I skip you?
Nope, you got me first, uh.
Thank you.
Chair, we're missing someone, I think.
Yeah, Chair Thompson.
Hi.
Five to two.
Okay, the uh, motion has been adopted for attachment four to go to uh, public hearing. And just as a reminder to all, all this is doing for all of our motions tonight is just to publish and to go to public hearing and listen to the public's input. And then we will discuss these and there is another round for uh, discussion and amendments prior to adoption to go to the city council. Lori, do you have anything more for us tonight?
Uh, I do not, except to say congratulations. This is really a milestone to have your preliminary recommendations on a number of things. Capital facilities element last time, now land use, housing, and the vision statement. Uh, we're now going to step back away from the comprehensive plan changes, which we'll be uh, sending out to the public over the next month, uh, with a tentative hearing date of May seventeenth. Um, and then for April, we're going to be talking about missing middle housing amendments. We are bringing forward those zoning amendments at the same time as we bring forward the comprehensive plan amendments. So we'll spend uh, two or three meetings talking about those potential changes and and getting ready to make a uh, have you make a preliminary recommendation on that.
So that's what's coming up next.
That's what's coming up next.
Oh, wonderful. I think we're all very excited about this.
Again, congratulations.
Oh, thank you. So May seventeenth is a, the preliminary date for a public hearing.
Correct.
So if there are members of the commission that have a problem with that date, would you please communicate with me by phone? Uh, and by the um, let's say by the end of the week, so I can communicate to Lori if we have a problem with several people or a problem with the quorum for, we have to have a quorum at least, if not more, uh, for a public hearing. That's pretty important. Is there anything for the good of the order? Mr. Derek.
Yeah, I'm wondering if uh, if we follow suit when the city goes back on site um, for daily routines or what uh, what our thoughts are on in-person meetings or continuing Zoom or or hybrids or what what the discussion is there, what thoughts are.
When is the city council going back to um, in-person meetings?
Um, I think they're exploring sometime in April, but looking at if they can do that as in a hybrid way. I don't know if they've decided if they're going back as a group or if they put up a hybrid or if they still, how that's all going to work. So there are some technical logistical issues that are currently being worked out as to what that will mean. And then I guess we would be following the council's direction on that. So it could be coming up as soon as April. As soon as I know what the council's doing and how that will work, I will let you know if there is going to be a shift to in-person meetings at City Hall or if there's an option to continue for some people to be Zoom as well. That's all I know, right? So I don't really have a full answer. It, I guess it's the technical side's been explored.
I think it's uh, prudent for us to follow the city council's uh, lead on this. If they're not uh, moving to either hybrid or in-person, um, then we should not be either. Um, that's for the same reasons that we should not get in front of the the council. And honestly, I think that's a co- uh, depending on what happens as far as technology. It's a, even if they go to in-person meetings, I certainly think it's a a conversation we should have on whether or not we do a hybrid or um, or something. So I I leave that open, but thank you very much for bringing that up. You know, Rita will have her hair being pulled from many directions. Thank you, Rita. She's there somewhere.
I'm I'm here.
Oh, all right. Any further, thank you, Derek. Any further discussions for the good of the order?
I just want to thank. I just want to thank Lori and Debbie for helping to walk us through all these changes and all these elements. Um, and answering our questions. It's not an easy task. I just want to give you all of them too.
Here, here. I think she's expressed the feelings of all of the commissioners. This has been a a monumental task on behalf of the staff and uh, we just kind of work on the work that you've done and without your work, we couldn't do what you've asked us to do and what the city council is asking us to do. So it's eight thirty-eight and with that, I adjourn this um, meeting of the planning commission. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.